I will call the regular meeting of April 17, 2025 to order to extend the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to their Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Robach?
Here.
Ms. Sensei?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Robach?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2025?
I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Robach?
I understand.
All right, before we begin board member reports, I'd like to move to two moments of silence to cover this evening. This is what we're going to cover, the first one, Steve Baldwin.
It is always sad to learn someone's passing, especially when it's a member of our Madison family. Recently, we learned the passing of Steve Baldwin, former Madison school board member and longtime Madison supporter. Steve was born on August 1, 1925, in East Rockville, Ohio, and passed away on March 27, 2025, after a courageous battle in the Civil War. Steve was known for his passion for sports and spent many years coaching basketball. He also enjoyed playing golf and spending time with his family. He served on the board from January 5, 2002, through December 18, 2009. He was larger than life, and he really could light up a room, and his heart was as big as he was. I think he was about 6'4", 6'5", and, you know, he could just command a room, and, you know, he really cared about the kids in his community. Steve will be missed by his three daughters, Christine, Stephanie, and Jordan, his seven grandchildren, sons-in-law, and other family and friends. Steve was preceded and adopted by his wife, Mary Jane Balllett, a former language arts teacher for Madison local schools. All of us at Madison schools extend our deepest and most sincere sympathy to Steve's family and friends.
Unfortunately, we have a second one tonight. Recently, we learned of the passing of Gary Piker, a retired science teacher for the Madison Local School District and longtime driver's education instructor. Gary was born on October 18, 1945, in Canton, Ohio, passed away on March 14, 2025, at David Simpson Hospital House. Gary taught science at Madison High School from September 1, 1967, and retired in July of 1998. Gary will be missed by his wife of 56 years, Louise, son Scott, and other close family and friends. All of us at Madison schools extend our deepest and most sincere sympathy to Gary's family and friends.
I do want to share that Gary, I think, was teaching drivers ed, teaching people the car park for a long time, because I'm pretty sure I was, you know, superintendent. I'd be going into the high school, and there he was getting kids, and, you know, during their study hall and teaching them how to drive. So I'm sure he's taught many of our students.
Well, I'm one of them. He was a science teacher at the high school when I was there, graduated in 1990, right in the middle of his teaching experience there. He was a very good teacher, very nice. Is there anyone wishing to give a board member report this evening?
I do not have a board member report, but I do want to call attention to our cover today. It's called Fish Prince by Colton Greading, who is a fourth grader at North Elementary School. And thank you very much, Colton.
All right. We'll move to public participation. We do have someone registered to speak tonight. Trenton, where is it? Did I say that right?
Yeah. For members of the board and superintendent, I am joining the rest of the Madison House School. I recently organized a mystery in the district to graduate teaching. May I talk to you about Schreiber? I am asking you, and at the following dates, we announce a new thinking in our year. January 9, 2025. April 4, Fair Professional Day. April 22, to Schreiber. April 24, Initiative Professional Day. May 4, Principal Day. May 2, the cafeteria staff and maid day. May 7, Yost Appreciation Day. And October 2, School Pursuing Appreciation Day. Available 24 substitute teachers day. I hope that the next one will be said in a fair way possible.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Wow, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Reports and recommendations.
Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the reports that I've included in as attachments to the agenda are for initial statements for March, ending March 31, 2025, which is nine months of the fiscal year, which is about 75% of the fiscal year, and our fiscal year ends June 30. So at the end of March, all funds we have received, $31,457, $31,457,097.8 cents. We have spent $29,379,120.97, and we've got a reconciled balance of $14,023,857. Of that, the general fund has brought in $21,621. Now, the March balance this year compared to last year in revenues that we received are real that difference. One other thing that I did share with you, we contract with Frontline, which is forecasted by analytics, and I shared with you the reports that are generated on a monthly basis, and recaps, and there's also some narratives in boxes. I won't go through it, I'll let you review it and look at it. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, but I think it's great information, good information. And again, this is through March, so it has some comparatives of last year to this year, and looks at where we were both a month compared to last year, and the nine months where we were nine months last year and nine months from this year. Questions on the financials?
I don't think I have any right now, but I may. Yeah, this is, I got to have time to look at it.
Sure, okay, I understand. Motion?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Robach?
Yes.
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
The next item is donations that we've received. First is to accept a generous donation of $100 from Elaine Tobel to Madison High School to be used for senior fees. To accept a generous donation of $300 from Paula Schmuck to Madison High School to be used for senior fees. To accept a generous donation of $25 from Tom Liddkey to Madison High School to be used for senior fees. To accept a generous donation of $50 from Marla Liddkey to Madison High School to be used for senior fees. To accept a generous donation of $2,592 from the Madison Boosters to Madison Middle School to be used for the physical education department outdoor classroom. To accept a generous donation of $40 in building materials from Gavin Wood to Madison Middle School Junior National Honor Society to be used for Dylan Fairbanks' service project. To a building for Dylan Fairbanks' National Art Society service project. To accept a generous donation of $250 in materials from Crystal Fairbanks to Madison Middle School Junior National Art Society to be used for Dylan Fairbanks' service project. To accept a generous donation of $250 in materials from Goffr Electric to Madison Middle School Junior National Art Society to be used for Dylan Fairbanks. I ask for a motion.
Yeah, can you find out what the service project is? I'll know. Okay, I just want to know what this is.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Robach?
Yes.
I have been blown away by their service projects.
Yes, yes.
There's been a lot of different ones, a lot of the kids at the high school, and the reading ones that they've given back, and it's just really been pretty amazing.
That concludes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That concludes my report for the night.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the folks who donated here to us tonight. Reports to the administrative team.
Well, I think I'll start with some of the not fun stuff, and then I'll go into the fun stuff. Go on a happy. I did want to talk a little bit about the state budget tonight. I've sat in on a couple different meetings, I've looked at different documents that have gone out, and there's a lot of concern about the impact on different districts. The House budget is dramatically different from the governor's budget. Governor's budget kept the fair school funding formula intact, but was funding it at F fiscal year 2022 levels, so that would be a decrease in costs and funds to the districts. The House flatlined funding, but their inputs are different. They have starting numbers that are totally different. So for me, that says they're not quite sure where their, what their starting point is. But the House flat funded their budget and are going to, thus, and I venture to say, probably will never impact us, is the 30% property tax give back. If you have more than 30% carryover in any year of the budget, you would have to give back money to the taxpayers. We do not have that problem because we don't have a 30% carryover. Our problem will be explaining to taxpayers why we don't have property tax money to give back. This was their fix to the property tax, the things that people are so upset about. From here, they're on recess this week, next week, and then they'll come back in the beginning of May, and it will go to the Senate. The Senate will start to take, I'm sorry, a hearing. They'll take hearings on it, and then they will issue their budget. And then we will compare all three, and then it will go to conference committee, which by June 30, they anticipate having a budget.
So, right now, as it stands, though, the governor's budget, we lose funding, the House budget, we lose funding, so either way, we lose funding.
No, we get a little bit of funding in the House budget, but the input the governor's budget started with was higher, so they didn't have the same starting numbers. So the input still was higher, we lost a couple hundred thousand dollars over two years of the budget, but it was still leaving us more money in their simulation than where the House budget started us. Yeah. I asked that question of our legislative liaison, and he didn't have a good answer for me.
How scary is that?
I asked Tony Potajohn, and he said, "Everybody's asking that. Why are the inputs different?" So that...
Well, you think you would be starting with what you're getting in the current year.
Right, right.
And then, and then from there, you say, "We're going to give you more, less," some formula, something. When you have two different numbers to start, we'd like...
Right, exactly. So that was, to me, it was very concerning. I said, you know, "I'm not understanding this. I'm not a treasurer, but I know enough when two, no, starting numbers are not the same." So, you know, our organizations are very active, they keep sending things out, OSBA sends things out to all of us, BASSA sends things out. I will keep you posted as we get more information. I do want to talk briefly because our county has talked about measles. We have not had measles reported in this county, but we did talk about it, and every district did look at how many unvaccinated students there are in various schools. We have some unvaccinated students, a lot less if you take out, if they've had one vaccine, they can still get it with one vaccine, but it's 93% effective if they've only had one dose of the vaccine, which I thought, okay, that's not too bad, is something that I heard. But, you know, we're prepared, we did chicken pox in the fall, if we have to do something, we've been talking about it, and we're ready. I'm hoping with one month to go, we're going to be okay. All right. So now I'm going to move on to, I think, some happy things. We are up in our kindergarten registration right now. As of Tuesday of this week, we have 103 registered for kindergarten. I think it's that we did a better job getting the word out to go online and register. We did our kindergarten nights at the buildings. They were attended, okay, I mean, I don't think they were hot, you think they were...
I think they were, if we had taken the groups from each of the two buildings and put them together, it would have filled that gym in this building, which is where we used to do it.
So we had, you know, a nice turnout, but we have 103 that have been registered with all their paperwork. So, you know, we'll watch these numbers as we do all summer, and then in early August, make decisions if we need to add a section or not.
What numbers did we have last year? Well, this year?
This year, we have 168 kindergarten.
And we're about 65 away from a new number.
Yeah, from that number. It's about 175 when I would have to add a teacher. So, that's where we're at. I do want to say, I attended last week, Friday, the Sun and VIP Dance. They did a wonderful job, and this Haruska back there was one of the architects of it. They put a lot of work into it. The boys had a good time entertaining their mothers, and it was, it's really just such a lovely event. You know, they started this, how many years ago did you start this?
It's been there since I, since he's been in, went in preschool, so at least eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's been around for quite a bit.
And at the end of the, you know, and next Friday is the Kiwanis Father Daughter Dance, and the, there will be an announcement going out because of how they take tickets and admit they want me to put an announcement out Tuesday for all of those attendings, who they know the right way to go in, and the line moves quickly, is what I've heard. This afternoon, I sent, I attended a signing day at Madison High School. They did a wonderful job recognizing some of our students that were accepted to D3 schools and are going to compete in sports, and we had two military signings as well. And it was just such a lovely event, and the kids did so well, and it was, you know, there were flowers on the tables for our people that were signing, it was just so well done, and a very happy day. Big news, I think I've shared with you, but I won't repeat it here. We are putting a roof on the industrial arts wing, which is the drafting room, the weight room, and the wood shop. We're going to do that section of the roof this summer. We use state term pricing, we had enough money in our permanent improvement to do it, so, you know, when we have it, we got to do it.
So when you say we're putting a roof on, we're putting a new roof?
Yes.
Not patching?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a new roof.
Who from our side, like, monitors, like, their quality of it?
Yeah. Yeah. That does. Yes, yeah, he works the ball.
Trust me, they're fine.
Yeah, exactly. And next weekend is also prom. It was in Geneva this year. You notice we have two contracts, there was a slight mix-up with last year's contracts and who could sign, so we're rectifying that and then entering into a contract for next year later on the agenda. And we have Bird Day at Madison High School on May 2. Our service learning class is coordinating those events, and it should be a great day for our students. And I will go to, since it's been a little while, Mrs. Bafti is going to do her Member of the Month for us.
Okay. Unfortunately, when we move to the board meeting date, Bafti will be with us this evening, but Gabrielle Peters is our Member of the Month this month. She's a kindergarten teacher at North Elementary. I know last month, when I was here, I spoke about our Bunny Breakfast fundraiser, and Gabby was our driving force, our coordinator, organizer, maker of all things that happened for the breakfast. We were actually able to raise $1,800 for our scholarships this year, so it was a wonderful event, and Gabby did an absolutely phenomenal job. Got all of the food donated, local businesses to sponsor and help with our raffle basket, decorations, crafts, games. We had a visit from the bunny for photographs. She also, this year, I thought was wonderful, set up a sensory-friendly bunny for those that might not be so inclined to visit the other Easter bunny that was visiting with us, just a little softer, gentler, and that was all her idea. Gabby has been, she actually started teaching in third grade and has been in kindergarten for a few years since, and she was nominated by four different members, actually, for all the work that she did with the Bunny Breakfast. So Gabby got a little gift card to go get some books, she's an avid reader, so congratulations to her, and thank you to everyone who's supported and helped and advertised for our Bunny Breakfast. We're so grateful for all the support and being able to provide those scholarships for kids that are continuing their career in education.
So it was a great event, and Gabby has done a good job with it, and Ashton said, "Well, we get to come next year again." And I said, "Of course we'll come." You know, he actually won one of the games, the estimation game. He guessed there were 160 cotton balls, and I think there were 183. And so Gabby's mom, Margie, handed him the prize, a chocolate bunny, and he goes, "I don't like chocolate." I don't know where he came from.
The food was delicious.
Yeah, I know.
The sausage and the pancakes was phenomenal.
Scramblers and nectar, I have to give them, and they shut up. They give us those breakfasts for a dollar, which they sponsor for us, so.
Wow.
Just great. Lots of local businesses donated. The Holiday Inn here in Madison donated lots of wonderful local business donations.
It was a beautiful day.
You know, what I want to know is, how does any kindergarten teacher, how does any teacher find time to read, between the planning and the grading and...
And she actually isn't here this evening because she works a second job.
Oh, my gosh!
She is a dance instructor, and that's why she couldn't be here this evening to accept her award, because she also teaches dance several nights a week and works with young children and dance.
And she still finds time to read.
Settle time, so, you know, that becomes...
Oh, yeah, it is recital season.
Yeah. Gold, you have anything?
I just wanted to add on to what you said about the kindergarten registration. We did it differently this year, we had it at the buildings. We were thinking about a lot of families' first exposure to our schools, and we thought, "Let's get them in, let's kind of walk them through parts of the building that they're going to be exploring on day one, so it doesn't look brand-new to them on that first day." They actually got to visit, you know, several of their classrooms, see what it would look like in their classrooms, they got to walk through the cafeteria line, and they got a healthy snack. They even got to, and I didn't realize this was going to happen, I knew we were going to have a bus there for them to get on, but they got on the bus, and the drivers took them for loops around the parking lot, so that was pretty cool, too. So they got to, I think, get in the buildings and experience what it'll look like, so hopefully day one in August, you know, they're, they kind of know what they're walking into at that point. So I thought that was, that was, it worked out pretty well. And a lot of work went into it by the people at the buildings this year, so I wanted to thank them as well. That's all I have.
Well, ironically, I can piggyback off of that. We are having our second meeting for the kindergarten transition from pre-K to kindergarten. That's always a little bit nerve-wracking, and especially for parents of students with disabilities, and so Jovette and Shannon and Teresa and I are meeting, trying to figure out the best way to group students and how we're going to kind of have meetings set up before, before, you know, the parents and the students actually start. And so basically, all I'm doing the next two months is already planning for next year, so we're kind of already finished with this year. So we've got a lot of things in motion right now outside of that, and Angela and I have a big meeting next week to talk about what our numbers are going to look like and how we're going to service the needs of our students, so stay tuned. Very busy times.
Any recommendations?
Yes.
They're pretty short tonight. We're asking you to enter into following employment contracts. First is Makella Marshall and Sarah Lee as, under a one-year limited substitute teacher contract for the 2024-25 school year. We're asking you to enter into the casual day-to-day substitutes at the board-approved rate of compensation effective the 2024-25 school year for Mia Guzzi and Sarah Lee. We're asking you to approve issuing a continuing contract to the following certified personnel who have met all licensure coursework and sort of service requirements, and that is with Christopher Kaleric and Melissa Kaleric. That is the employment motion this year.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Robach?
Yes.
Yes.
The second is the second reading of the board policy updates. We were given them in March, we were given a packet of them via email. These are the standard revisions recommended by, or new policies recommended by Miola.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robach?
Yes.
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, and under the consent calendar this evening, we have several items. We're asking you to approve the program of studies for Madison High School for the 25-26 school year, as found on file in the board office. To add to the approved attorney list, Retsal and Andrus, effective April 1, 2025. To enter into a service agreement between the Madison Local Schools and the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. And approve the checklist of services for the 25-26 school year, as found on file at the board office. To enter into a contract with the Lodge and Conference Center at Geneva on the Lake, rent their facility and use their catering services for the Madison High School Prom on April 26, 2025. And then to enter into a contract with the Lodge and Conference Center at Geneva on the Lake, to rent their facilities and use their catering services for the Madison High School Prom on April 25, 26, as found on file in the board office.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion?
They are, well, the one is for this, this year, April 26th. We did that, I was just going to say that. That was yesterday. Yeah, because it was very confusing. I kept saying, "Send me the right contract." Well, I did. I said, "I don't have the 26th contract," because the 26th and 25th...
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Roba?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We do have a need for executive session this evening, so do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or regulated individuals?
I'll, I'll second.
Roll call?
Ms. Sensei?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Roba?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I have 6:35.
Stand in recess.
Okay, does somebody have the air conditioning on in here?
Yes.
Why?